Everyone, welcome to April 6th, 7:30 special Board of Education meeting. Carol, Kelly, roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Hallen? Ms. Hamm?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Martelli?
There.
Mr. Peridini?
Here.
Mr. White?
He might be muted.
I can see him. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Carol. I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent Sol is going to put the flag on the screen for us. All right. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Pledge of Allegiance to the
United States of America. To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome yet to another virtual online Board of Education meeting. We're going to follow our normal schedule. We do a public comment section at the beginning of the meeting. We also have a section toward the end of the meeting to address any correspondence that comes in via the CPS COVID-19 at cheshire.k12, a CPUS email address. So folks are not chiming in now. Be plenty of opportunity later after we discuss all business. That being said, Lieutenant Sol, do you have any questions yet at this point?
I did. I had one comment from Jamie Ferguson asking if perhaps we would consider asking in the next students' survey if they're feeling more well-rested. I think alluding to the school start times or any sort of differential there. That's the only comment I have thus far.
As always, thank you, Jamie, for your insight and idea. I'll take a note of that. Seeing as there's not a public comment, we're going to turn over to Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peridini. There are several items that, I mean, the transition to remote learning has required an incredible amount of change over the course of the last several weeks. And as we did in the last meeting, I'll provide a brief update with opportunities, obviously, for questions. And then I asked Ms. Solano and Mr. Maciana to give quick updates as well. First and foremost, again, I want to thank our parents, our students, and our staff. The transition is very challenging. Even if we didn't have all these other restrictions in our lives, it would be challenging. But to navigate, you know, make your own face mask and no sports and no, you know, activities for our students. In light of that, it's even more challenging. I appreciate the effort our students, staff, and parents have put into making remote learning successful. As you know, the schools, per the governor's order, will be closed until April 20th. Although I do want to let the board and our community know that we were told approximately April 10th, we would be learning more as to whether or not that date will be extended. Unfortunately, if you're familiar with the forecast from the state epidemiologist, it looks like that's more of a probability that it would be extended. And I received an email today from the governor's office indicating that there would be a superintendent conference call on the 10th. So stay tuned. I want to remind people, if they have any questions, to please go to our website. There's a plethora of information there, as well as following us on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. Remote learning continues to be our number-one priority, although we are starting to, you know, consider other things that we would normally have to consider moving into this part of the year. So, you know, there's a sign of that. Today, I received a preliminary draft late this afternoon about a potential town council budget calendar. So the beat is starting to move forward. I have to acknowledge our principals, who have done a tremendous job with all these virtual parades and sign shows and everything, particularly at the elementary level. But today, there was a hummuston parade. The staff has done, they've come out in droves independently and waved. It is kind of neat. I did have a parade go by my house, and it was kind of cool, even as an adult, to see all your friends drive by and wave. So I'm sure our kids get a real thrill out of it. Some of the videos are just spectacular to see how enthusiastic our kids get. It's a lot of fun. April vacation update. I want to remind people that our April vacation, I sent out an email to all of our students, parents, faculty. Last week, we are truncating our April break. It'll begin this upcoming Friday and on the 10th. And then we'll also have the following Monday and Tuesday off. It's important that, you know, we cut that a little bit short for a few reasons. First of all, we we know that some students, many students, many of our staff are in sort of a routine at this point, and we want to continue to maintain that. But we also wanted, thinking that this may go a much greater distance, unfortunately, this remote learning, keep a few days in our pocket to be able to apply those potentially later in the school year if we need to. And if things are going really well, and if our student and community physical and emotional health is in a good place, then maybe we take those days off the end of the year. But we're going to monitor that. But we did feel it was important to have that break. So five days away from remote learning will be a needed respite for our students and staff. Then an update on union status. I just want to give you a quick update on that. The, there was, you know, we did have some conversation around the IA lunch aid slash hall monitor bargain unit. Shortly after, we had our initial memorandum of understanding with our teachers. Obviously, that was our initial priority to get a memorandum of understanding in place with our teachers as they were going to be facilitating on a daily basis the remote learning. And obviously, you know, like I said, we prioritize that. And then we looked at the instructional aides, who also provide a tremendous amount of service to our students. So over the course of a week or so, Mr. Maciana and I went back and forth with the union leadership there. I have to thank Lori Delkor. She was tremendous. And she and Mary Ann Kish were even volunteering at Dodd handing out meals before we got our memorandum of understanding signed, kind of demonstrating their confidence that we would get it squared away. And we did. With our unemployment being the way it is, it would be fairly costly to lay all of them off. We would still have to pay a good portion of their salary. And there's still some uncertainty around what we may have to pay under these enhanced unemployment benefits. So what we did was negotiate a really good situation for both the IA group and us. They are providing a tremendous amount of service. Our Dodd meal service is beyond our capacity, really. So we've brought in IAs who've been an incredible resource for that. They're also supporting our students through remote learning. They're also engaged in professional development remotely. So that group is very active. Our custodians and maintenance staff are working in the buildings right now. They're providing a level of security and monitoring our buildings to make sure, God forbid, there's a birth pipe or something that are available. They're also working on projects that we have in the building. Our administrators and teachers continue to work through this process. Same with our secretaries. They're handling communications. Our non-unionized staff, for example, our technology leadership team, they are always working these days. They're ever-present. Our nurses are kind of coordinating. Unfortunately, you know, as COVID-19 comes closer to home, we've had more confirmed cases in our community. They kind of coordinate and watch monitoring on that to make sure everybody's healthy as they can be. And we're trying to keep people out of harm's way, as well as, you know, we do have a couple of drivers that we're continuing to employ to run things like Chromebooks to houses and drop them off. And we're looking, and I'm sure Marlene will touch upon this, as we get closer to extending our remote learning out longer, that we'll need folks to make deliveries on remote learning packets and other things like that as that need draws closer. So at that time, I guess at this time is a good point to pause and see if there are any questions.
Oh, yeah. Adam had a question.
Hi, Jeff. Thanks. So in regards to the IA, IAs, I guess memorandum of understanding, you mentioned something about, I think in the last meeting, you mentioned that we self-insure for our unemployment.
Is that correct?
So then the, so your thought process there is that we could have potentially entertained laying off IAs, except that the sort of the cost to the school system is sort of a wash, is kind of what you're saying, even though
Yeah, I don't know that it would be a wash. I know it would cost us at least 60% of their salary. As I said, to the enhanced benefits now being offered through remote learning, we employ more than 500 people, which is a pretty critical number. And it may very well be the case that we would have to pick up even more than 60% is my understanding. But I don't know the exact details of that because the details hadn't been hashed out at all by the time that we had made that decision to extend the memorandum of understanding. As I indicated as well, we had the need for that staff to support students, particularly students with special needs in remote learning environments, as well as our youngest students. And then additionally, you know, now the governor extended another sorry, indicating that districts should do everything within their power to continue employment for yearly staff. So for example, substitutes who are very intermittent, you know, many of them are, we did not continue to pay them.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for that clarification.
Sure. Tim White has a question. Tim, if you're talking, you're on mute.
I can tell that he's, it doesn't look like he's on mute, but maybe having a little problem with his audio.
Well, yeah, I hear some noise. Why is it looking through that? I just had a quick, just so I, yeah, so the MLU, the IAs, memorandum of board thought about a week or so ago, there's really no end date to that, right? It's tied to the COVID shutdown. So essentially, that's an effect until we're able to open schools back up again and not be so we're in that situation where we negotiate again after or before April 20th, correct?
That's absolutely correct. And I think the other thing that it does is it really protects us. If indeed, we were to open on, you know, April 21st, whatever that first school day is after April 20th, all of our staff would still be in place. If people decided to leave to go work at UPS or some, you know, Amazon or something, we would really be hurting. Without that, you know, it's a tough position to fill on a good day. It's, you know, to fill even a tenth of our existing staff would create a significant problem.
So Tim did messages. Question is, just curious, do we know if any of our students have been diagnosed with the COVID-19 yet or not?
We've had students, parents, and staff impacted.
Not surprised. Faith, you had to add on to that, I believe.
Yeah, I just was going to ask how many faculty and staff were affected, if we had a number on that. And when infection occurred. I mean, clearly, you said, I think, at the last meeting, you didn't think that any were were in a position to transmit while school was still in session. Do we know anything about that?
Yeah.
And how are they okay? That's the other thing.
Right. I really defer most of the medical stuff to Chespercot. But in my conversations with them, they indicate that, you know, when we got out on the 13th, by the time these people demonstrated signs, they 99% sure didn't pick it up in school. But the people, all the people that were infected, to my latest knowledge, seemed to be doing okay. I would put that number close to a dozen of, you know, collectively.
Got it. Thanks, Faith. Any other board members with questions on Superintendent's update so far? If not, I believe Marlene has a update. Correct?
Hi, evening, everyone. First, before I get into the specifics of remote learning, I just want to once again express appreciation to the board and our parents and our staff for their patience and support during this emergency. We know that the longer that this lasts, the more parents, teachers, and students will be impacted by this virus. And we understand that there are families caring for parents and for elderly relatives and their children at home while they're remote learning, remote working, or they're still essential staff. So I can appreciate how difficult this is for everyone involved, not just our staff. And I think that the bottom line is that we're all trying to work together to help our students stay connected, to feel supported, and to bring them some kind of normalcy during this just incredible crisis. And so having, having school for them, I think, is doing a service, not just in educating them, but in trying to stabilize life. So really want to just thank everyone for their help. If we talk about remote learning, since we're in our 14th day today, and during that time, we had one day of orientation. We got a parent survey together where we had over 1,650 responses, which I think is a fantastic response, and certainly appreciate all the parents who participated. We also had a teacher survey, which we distributed on March 30th, and we'll be launching our student survey in the next day or so. So we, based on the results of these surveys, both the parent and the teacher survey, we have made the decision to move our third-grade students to use Google Classroom. And we have been messaging that, I think, our principals and our curriculum folks, because we are getting all of those messages and out to our teachers. And we have been working with them to get them up to speed to be able to deliver that. And so that will happen this Wednesday. Our K-2 students, we are adding limited online components for especially reading and math. We asked some questions in our survey, and we got back from families that this is definitely something that they wanted and something that would be doable for them based on their technology access. So in addition to the online component, we will also be distributing learning toolkits to replace or replenish what we have already sent out the Friday that they left school. So this will be happening next week, Wednesday and Thursday. And it's staff working tirelessly behind the scenes to get that together and to create these materials. Our, our tools that we're continuously using and continue to provide support with are Google Classroom, Google Meet, School Messenger, and Screencastify. There's been some question out there among our parent community about the audio and video on the devices that we've sent home. And I want people to understand that we, very diligent years ago in not giving students access to the video portion of the camera. And that's something that will not work so long as they are signed in through their Cheshire Public Schools credentials. That is something, however, that we are looking into, and we may be making some changes to that to allow video as, as time goes by, making sure that we are skilled in knowing, knowing how to use that as a tool. So those things seem to be, seem to be working well at this point in time. And again, based on some of the student and, I'm sorry, parent and teacher surveys, we are, we are continuously monitoring and adjusting. To support that, another technology access survey was sent out last week to determine technology and internet access capability for grade three. We have deployed another 35 or so Chromebooks, and those, some of those were delivered today, and some will be delivered beginning at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. We also have deployed Wi-Fi devices to those families who did not have internet access. We're supporting over 3,300 remote learners in grades three through 12. And both our technology integration specialists, who are the frontline on handling those software questions and supports, there's two of them. And, and they are really doing a great job of supporting in that area. We also have our technology department, who is supporting with hardware. And I know that Vin is going to share more about what they're doing when we get to his part of the report. We are also supporting approximately six staff members with software support from a support, a software standpoint, as well as have distributed devices to those teachers who needed them to work from home. To, to, to continue to support both our IAs and all of our non-certified staff and our certified staff, our tech support or tech integration specialists. They're working together to provide videos, which are online for our parents and our teachers on that support page of our portal. And they're also providing daily, it's kind of a cute title, it's called Lunch Bites, and it's professional development daily for teachers and staff. And the bites is spelled B-Y-T-S. So they're doing a great job with that, and it's been really well-received and are then recorded so that teachers can go back and look at them if they were unavailable during that Lunch Bites time. We, I want to also explain that while this isn't something that we want to be doing, this is certainly something that we need to be doing. And that those kiddos out there who may be struggling, who need intervention, or have been a part of SRBI or special education, that I want to try and put parents at ease a little bit and know that when they come back to school, whenever it may be, we will be there to support them, and we will, we will meet them at the door where they are and get them where they need to be. And, and we're in the process of continuing to do that remotely, but it is, it is challenging. I'm sure it's challenging on the parents' part. But I want to take, I hope to alleviate some of that stress and let parents know that if, not to argue about the assignment with a kiddo if they're struggling, that we've put things into place for students and teachers and students and parents to reach out so that we can provide that support even remotely, for as long as, for as long as this goes on. I thought I'd give you just a brief overview of some of the highlights of the, the teacher survey. So when we asked them to describe their transition to remote learning, roughly 30% said that this was very challenging for them. 64% said that this was manageable, and close to 10%, I think it was around eight, said this was a smooth transition. So we reached out and asked what other kinds of supports did they need? And we've been, we had a lot of that in place and just needed to direct them to what those supports could be. When we asked them, how easy has it been to make contact with each student and each family? 95% said that it was somewhat easy or fairly easy to make that contact. So that, that says a lot. And 5% said it wasn't easy. We do have some, some families who it's, it's hard for us to get in touch with. But by and large, when we're talking about over 95% being in touch with families and kids, that's a strong number. Most of their correspondence with families is about how to support their student. Most of the correspondence with students is a combination, about 20% each of feedback, giving feedback, answering questions about assignments, supporting them with concepts that they need help with, and 4% was questions about technology. The other 30% was a range of a random smattering of things that all came down to, you know, that child needing some one-on-one time, either email or via, via audio or phone call, et cetera. We have a great number of students, according to the teachers, engaged daily in these lessons. Teachers felt that they were supported and engaged in collaboration. Every day, we have meetings going on remotely, either by grade level or by department, or at the middle school by division. We have administrators reaching out, reaching out to them on a daily basis to provide the types of supports that we need. And also daily communications with our technology integration specialists and our K-A curriculum coordinator. So that, that is something that has not ceased and will continue throughout this process. Teachers are feeling pretty good about the tools that they have. When we asked them if there were any other tools that they wanted, there was not, they were sort of one-offs. There was no one tool that they felt that Cheshire Public Schools needed to make this better. We asked about their bright spots, and I'll tell you that some of the bright spots that teachers talked about were seeing how our students can be self-directed learners, that students really wanted to be connected. I had a math teacher say to me, you know, the kids always complain about being in school. It's so nice to see that they, they really miss us. You know, the emails, the, the conversations in these Googles, it really makes me feel good. So I think that's nice to see. And of course, with the parades that you've seen around town, the teachers are really trying to show the students the love right back. Other parts are feedback, being able to give that, that feedback, that having the tools they need to do that has been helpful. The challenge is, like everyone, just like the parents said, it's missing that connection, that face-to-face interaction. So that, that gives you a little bit of an overview on, on the teacher feedback results. The other piece that I wanted to share with you was about state testing. We got news today. I mentioned last time that the AP exam was moving to at-home testing. And today, we heard that all Connecticut public and private colleges and universities will be accepting AP credits for qualifying scores from the College Board's online AP exam. So that should put some students and some parents' minds at ease. The other piece of information that we received from the College Board today was that there will not be, they will, the College Board, we won't be having, they will not be able to provide the PSAT to our eighth, ninth, or 10th graders. So that will not be happening. More to come on that. The last piece, and I really touched on this previously, was the degree and the hours at which all of our teachers and administrators and staff are working remotely. Our administrators have been doing a great job supporting teachers, ensuring that teaching and learning is consistent across grade levels. That communication has been ongoing. So with that, I will take any questions that you all might have for me.
Thank you, Marlene.
I didn't catch that, Tony.
Adam had a question.
Oh, okay.
Can everyone hear me? Because my, my browser seems to be a little weird.
I can hear you.
Okay. And after, okay, on the video, the video being disabled on Chromebooks, is that something that if you use the Mac or a PC, is, does that restriction go away, or is it only on a Chromebook? If you log in with the student login?
Yep. The student login has to go through Chrome and also with their Cheshire Public Schools credentials. That will disable the camera. That's the only way that we are able to do that.
So, so you're saying through the Chromebook, or if you, because obviously you have to use a Chrome browser. But if you're using a Chrome browser on a, just a regular PC or Mac, does that?
It should not work if they're, if they're accessing access, if they're on any device and it's through Chrome with their Cheshire Public Schools credentials, it should disable the camera.
And have there been any instances where any of the teachers have tried And have there been any instances where any of the teachers have tried to use anything like a Zoom or go-to-meeting for any sort of conferences with their students?
No, we have said that they should not be using Zoom or go-to-meeting. We want to make sure that they're using the products that we have tested, that we have no privacy concerns about or have exhausted all of our, you know, issues with privacy, meaning it's gone through the through the software request process and we have data privacy agreement with the company. And so we we've really discouraged anyone from using anything else but the tools that we have trained in and that we know how to control, to the best of our control, best of ability.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Anna. I think Anne had a comment in her message, but she wants to ask you if she can.
Okay.
I think her, Anne, it's up to you if you want to chime in.
I just wanted it, I just wanted to be reminded of it to ask, let Marlene know. And I was told that if we write in the chat box, that it goes on the record as well. So I don't feel the need to take up time during the meeting.
I'll go back and look at that, Anne.
Thanks, Anne. Tim was going to ask a question, but I guess he's holding off. I think he's still working out his difficulties. He had to reboot, he's back on.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, here he is. Yeah, we hear it great.
No question right now, just it's it'd be off topic at this point. I'll I'll bring it up later, thanks.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, we hear a lot of good. Adam has another question. Adam, if you want to take yourself off mute, you can ask the question. Or maybe not, we'll we'll come back to him. I I did have a question for you, Marlene. Early on, you're talking about the devices being distributed, you know, the teachers and even some of the the lower grades and so forth. Do we have any idea of, just just curiosity, how many devices have we distributed? And is our inventory in trouble, getting low? Is it, I know Chromebooks don't fly out of the sky, but I'm just kind of curious how we're doing with our.
So we we are managing what we have deployed very well. We are able to do break and fix. So rather than having them return it and fix it, we are deploying a new one until, not new, but an existing Chromebook that we have. We we have been able to do this fairly well. I wouldn't say we're running low, but I would say we are not going, we will, we will meet the need, but we won't be distributing one-to-one devices past third grade.
Got it, thanks, Marlene. And I'm, hang on. I'll have Faith go, she actually had a question before, Adam. Faith, you had a couple of questions?
Yeah, I do. Just go through them real fast. Is there any way, Marlene, that we as a board could receive that survey data? Is there, is it secure? Is there a question of confidentiality with it or can we review it?
I think we could probably provide you with the summary.
Okay, that would be great. And then with regard to special ed, do you have any, a special ed instruction? Do you have any idea what kind of demands are going to be on the system this summer when we finally get through this isolation, I hope? In terms of kind of filling in the gaps and what we're going to have to do there? Are you getting any feedback or is there any way to measure this at this point?
I don't think there's any way to measure it. I know that we have had many discussions on how we will address it when we come back. And we are doing our best now with our special education staff, our, all of our our related services, provider, counselor, school psychologist, speech and language therapists, OTs, PTs, that they are reaching out to fees, reaching out to students, trying to make things as typical and normal and provide as best they can the services that these students would get in school, which is a challenge because while these kinds of therapies exist, you know, remotely, it is certainly a challenge for a school system to do this. And we're not alone. All of the school systems around Connecticut and around the country are struggling with the same thing. We will be making determinations as part of the planning and placement team, which includes the parents, the service providers, the administrator, and in some cases, the student, when we get back to determine what additional services might be needed. We are hopeful that we can provide some of this over the summer. But I think that will all depend on the state of the state of health and state of our our schools and our state when summer gets here. But that is that is a plan. Is it something I'm concerned about from a from a number of perspectives? Who will staff that? And we we are always looking to improve our staffing levels for the summer. And this will be an interesting one after people have been cooped up for so long. So I think staffing is a concern as well as being able to get back into buildings if I'm thinking out that far. And then how long we will provide summer school, the budget, the budgetary constraints around that. All concerns, I don't have any way to predict what those will be. But know that we've been having conversations on that since the beginning of talks about a shutdown.
Okay, all right. Tony, I do have one more. I'm willing to wait and go to the end of the queue if that's, if that would be better for everybody else.
Okay, well Catherine had her hand up and then we'll circle back to you, Faith.
Thank you.
Catherine, you're up. Catherine, if you're talking, you're on mute. Well, Faith, I guess we're back to you.
All right, I'll step aside for Catherine if she's on. She can't unmute. I'm just really, it just really, is she off? Okay, so I know you're having your meetings and all. Our, which is great, it's I'm sure they're very similar to the, you know, to the the walks and all as much as they can be. But are you confident of the continuity of this instruction? That, you know, that the teachers are consistently applying or giving assignments, not giving it all on Monday and saying, hey, it's due by Friday? Or how do we know that it's being applied? That assignments and instruction are being applied equally or or what's the word I want, just consistently through the week rather than all at once?
So there's a number of things I guess I'll respond to in that. I think continuity across any organization as large as ours is always going to be a challenge. That's what we are all here to help do and support on behalf of our students. So we are, we push out those messages through all of our channels. And we're, we are confident in that those messages are are getting across in the ways that we are circling back to check to see how they're doing. We also have, it's funny that you say walkthroughs, Faith, because we have Google classrooms set up. And so, you know, our administrators have the ability to almost kind of do a walk of a classroom to kind of get a sense of what it looks like, what the assignments look like, what things are being posted, et cetera. So that's sort of our, in our new world, our new remote way of doing a, you know, a little, a little, a little visit to the class. But in I, this this new world of remote learning, we're trying to be much more flexible with what we're asking of students so that things aren't due by the bell schedule as they were in the old or old world, our normal world. And rather giving, giving options to kids and giving flexibility so that things might be assigned in the beginning of the week, but due dates are more flexible and kids have time to turn things in. Because we might have one student who's got to go grocery shopping for his grandmother and deliver groceries. We've got someone else who may be babysitting for another, you know, for siblings. You may have a mom who, you know, has to do lunch at certain times. So we're trying to be uber flexible with that and strike that balance because we do want all of our students to get the same similar experience depending on what classes they are taking. And I think you'll see some of that coming up in our professional development day that we've been talking about giving those teachers time to work together to make sure they are all in sync. So that's something that we're really cognizant of and that we, I think, strive for on a on a daily basis.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Tony.
Well, that was a great question, Faith. While I'm in this talk, and I I have a couple of email, I'm happy to send a couple of emails that my wife and I are getting from our daughter's teachers at the high school. I'll tell you, it gives a good example of, it kind of shows a spectrum on how the teachers are working with the students. I just wanted to put a shout out there that Tim Galvin has been just, in my opinion, wonderful with the communication. I mean, every week sending out detailed update to, I guess, his AP history parents. Here's what's going on this week, here's what they did last week, here's what things are doing differently. I get emails from Dawn to me and others. So I know most daughters won't see that unless you have children and serve them and each teacher's a little different. I will say that even among my daughters, it varies a little bit. There's, there's one teacher that will take attendance based, or if you're on the Google Meet or not, and will mark you absent or late. And then there's other teachers that, you know, will put the assignments out, maybe do two or three days in advance ahead of time. One of my daughters says that the amount of homework is a lot more than it was when it was in the classroom. And our daughter's actually loving the online learning. She feels she's learning more, I think because of dedicated focus, the assignment. So it's, but you can, you can see all the teachers trying various things and trying to communicate to the parents. So I'll send some of that over, it's very, it's very helpful. But, but I do want to thank all teachers for communicating as best they can. As Marlene said, there's a lot going on, not just with parents or students, but them too. I think for the most part are doing a good job finding the right balance. Adam, are you back? And Catherine, can you unmute yet? While we're waiting for them, I know that Andrew has a question. Andrew, you there?
Yes. Marlene, could you walk us through how some of the testing is being handled, the various grade levels?
So we're not talking standardized testing, we're talking.
General testing.
Yeah, yeah. So, sure, sure. We're continuing assessments. But again, just like with the AP exam, you know, these are going to be at-home assessments. Our, our high school in particular has been working really hard this year on common assessments across courses so that kids are, you know, being measured towards those standard course. And and to be honest, we have started with some of that. We tried pulled it off a little. I think the high school is probably moving in that direction maybe a little quicker than the middle school and the elementary school. But this is all new as far as the remote part of it. But students will continue to be assessed, but in some different ways too. Not always a summative assessment, but in some more formative ways so that we're getting a gauge of where they are along the way so we know what they need support with. At the elementary, we hope to be able to use a product that we purchased last year that we were using all this year for math. It's called Affirm. And we will be able to put that into play in the coming weeks so that we can get some good information on our students' progress. We're even tooling with some reading conferences at the elementary level to be able to assess that. So I would say it's a multi-pronged approach with our focus on that our mastering those standards in our curriculum that we think are the priority. Was that specific enough, Andrew?
Yeah, thank you.
Just got a message from, not Tim, Adam, he had to reboot his Mac, it froze on him. So he'll be back in a few minutes. Catherine did type her question, she saw there's an issue on muting. But her question is, if a K to two family does not want their student to be online, how will they be able to access same content as other students that are online or similar content?
So based on our surveys, we really found that was over ninety-something percent of the parents wanted more online work for their kiddos. If we had a parent who was not interested in in that or or couldn't do that, they would need to reach out to their teacher, reach out to the principal so that we could provide them an alternate way of getting that information. Probably the online things that they'll be asked us to do wouldn't be very different from the limited amount of online tasks we had them doing in school. And again, for our youngest learners, that was, that was really very minimal.
Thanks, Marlene. I don't see any other questions, so. And just for the couple of board members that have any issues with the microphone or video, we can circle back to your questions a little later when we do the other email question comment toward the end of the agenda. So, Marlene, if you don't have any updates, we can move on to reports of our standing committees. And by the way, thank you for that update, it's always very informational. I took a lot of notes and I appreciate the time you're putting into this as well as a hook back. So thanks again.
Thank you, Tony.
So up next, we have standing reports of our standing committees, starting with curriculum. Faith, do you want to give an update about the meeting held on March nine?
Sure. We all met on March ninth. Usual cast of characters was there. We had no public comment. We discussed a variety of issues, starting with Nature's Classroom. So that is for the Highland and the Chapman students. These classrooms are scheduled from May thirteenth through fifteenth for Highland and May eighteenth through twenty-two. For Chapman, at this stage, I have not heard that they've been canceled, but please chime in if they have. I think we're all hoping we're still going to be in school. But if that's been changed, it'd be good to know. Next, we moved on to out-of-country field trips scheduled for the spring, and those have all been canceled. For the underclassmen, they have been issued vouchers and they're looking to reschedule them for next year. Seniors have been issued refundable vouchers or transferable vouchers. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to alarm anyone there, they are just transferable. Next up, Dr. Gadd apprised us of. Where are my notes? File of paper. Oh, the Curriculum and Activities Night, it was held Juneteenth for incoming freshmen. It was a great turnout, fortunately. They had upwards of two hundred to three hundred students there. I'm not sure what the next, what we're going to do about the next one because that's my understanding that there were two of them. But at least a good number of kids were exposed to just some of the activities and clubs and a general introduction of what life in high school is going to be like for them. Next came Kevin Hanlon, who provided a review of some of the professional development activities. So these activities included math fluency work at Norton, Dodd Math and Language Arts teachers examining, we're examining mid-year data to inform instructional practices. And science teachers were working with the Connecticut Science Center to use the next-gen science standard assessments and instructional practices to support students. We also discussed that the grade three students took the Otis Lemon Ability Test late February, early March, and the results will be shared with families later in the school year. The next big item was an overview of the Science of Suicide curriculum. It was a great report by Tracy Hussey and Kathy Sullivan just on, just introducing us to some of the, the materials that are are being used in. The materials that are, are being used in health classes. And then finally, I just gave an update on a focus group that I attended regarding, um, Public Act number nine 12. An act concerning the inclusion of African-American studies in the public school curriculum. There is, even amidst all of this, there is an online, um, focus group. Site, and I encourage everybody who's listening to go in and give their input. It's being conducted by CIRC, the Special Education. Research Center, same questions they asked me. They're asking everybody else in terms of the scope of the project and what, um. You know, resources and this and that. It is vitally important that is, they get as much feedback as possible. Uh, we adjourn the meeting all within an hour and that's that.
Thank you, Faith. Any questions from the boardman on the curriculum committee report? Is there? Is none. Just want to check in. Adam, I saw your back. Are you able to, uh?
Yes, I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can see you too.
Excellent.
Welcome back.
Lucky for all of you that you can see me.
Uh, you missed the part. We're gonna, uh, yourself and Kath had a couple of minor issues with the audio. So any questions you have will. Dress, uh, when we do the code or email questions, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, up next is a report from finance committee.
Okay, um, I will read the, um, report from, uh, Vin first. Let's see. Okay, here we go. Um, and the way Mr. Masiana explained this to me is that this was the last, um, I guess, full. Regular month, uh, before COVID hit. So these are, uh, more, um, I guess, traditional figures that you'll be seeing. In the report. I don't know if anyone can share this on the screen or not. But I'll just begin reading. We have completed nine months of the fiscal year and the projected expenditure. Expenditure shown above through March 31st reflects several relatively minor developing negative trends as explained below. It is important to note, however, that our projections through March 31st exclude the impact to the district's expenditures that will begin to take effect in April. As we are adjusting and adapting as necessary to enable our educators and staff to teach and work remotely due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The overall impact on expenditures will depend on the duration of the remote learning period, which is scheduled to continue through at least. Monday, April 20th, 2020 by order of Governor Lamont. While the short-term impact of the remote learning work period is expected to result in a favorable budget variance. To lower costs for substitutes, substitutes, non-certified staff hours, maintenance and utility costs. We do expect that those savings will be offset by higher future costs for unemployment, medical benefits and special education services. We will obviously be analyzing the variances and project our future costs as we continue through the remaining months of the 2019, 20. Uh, 2019, 2020 fiscal year. The timeline of key past intended future events related to the COVID pandemic are as follows. Friday, March 13th, 2020 was the last day of classes with students in our school buildings. When, Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, remote learning and. Uh, remote teaching and learning begins for students. Uh, March 18th, grab and go program for student meals begins. Tuesday, March 25th, Governor's Stay Safe, State Safe, State Home Executive Order takes effect. And most district employees begin working from home excluded from remote work are. Are our facilities management and staff as well as the staff working in the grab and go program. Which includes food service, nurses, instructional assistants, bus drivers and our building maintainers. April 20, 2020, current end date for school closure requirement. Thursday, June 18th, 2020 is the expected last day of school. Certified salaries, certified salaries are projected to be below budget by a net of thirty two thousand three ninety-nine or point oh nine. Percent with overages and substitute and homebound tutoring costs offset by a positive variance in teacher salaries. Employee benefits, um, employee benefits are projected to exceed budget by one thousand four hundred six dollars or point oh one percent. Due to a minor increase in our disability insurance costs, instructional programs. We are projecting instructional programs will exceed budget by a net total of eighty six thousand two hundred twelve dollars or one point nine percent. Due primarily to tuition outplacement and pupil consulting costs for special education, which are projected to exceed budget by. One hundred seventy six thousand two hundred twelve dollars for the year. The budget overage for tuition outplacement and consulting is partially offset by reductions that will be. Made in our instructional supply textbook, library and curriculum accounts in order to meet our overall budget. Support services, we are projecting support services to, uh, be below budget by forty five thousand two hundred nineteen dollars or point six eight percent. Due primarily to lower than budgeted costs for copier, rental, printing and communication services. Student transportation and bus fuel. Operations management, we are projecting our operations and maintenance costs will be below budget by ten thousand dollars. Or point two eight percent with higher than budgeted costs for maintenance supplies being offset by lower than budgeted heating and snow removal costs. As of the writing of this report, we still have a district-wide expenditure limit of seventy percent. Of non-payroll accounts for our schools and departments, which will be adjusted accordingly as we move through April and May. And that's all I have for the, uh, overview.
Any? From the board, uh, financial area?
Actually, I do have one, uh, question, um, on the outplacement. Um, in the report, you said, uh, we would have an overage of one hundred seventy six thousand. Is that, uh, would that have been higher? Or is it expected to go higher once, uh, school reopens or we, um, have to, uh, provide services potentially in the summertime?
Okay, Adam, that question is for me, I suppose, so.
Yes, yes, sorry, Ben.
No, that's okay. Just want to kind of summarize the report that Adam read, really what. What we did for the March report is said, okay, here's where we are as of the end of March and what we were projecting out as of that point in time. To answer your question specifically about tuition outplacement, there's. A number of different things going on as we look in into April, May and June now. Our placement cost, because those outplacement centers are not open. They are providing remote services for those outplaced students. They are going to lower. The cost that they pass on to us. And those are being discussed right now and negotiated, uh, by Tracy Nolan Hussy with the provider. So. You know, a couple of providers have said that they'll bill at about eighty-five percent. Um, at least one said that they would bill at sixty percent. Now those costs will come down for the period that we're in remote learning. I think the big question that we don't have answers to yet, which Marlene started to touch on is. You know, as we get through April, May and then the school year, those special ed students, the. The placement teams that work with those students will likely apply. Services that we couldn't attend to during the school year. That will have to be made up over the summer. So even though our costs might be initially lower, April, May, placement tuition. We may have costs that will encourage until the summer to May. So it's a little bit unknown, I would say. And just kind of to add along that theme so that I can, you know, wrap up the finance report. I did provide the board members. You know, my estimate of total savings. Assuming that we go through the full month of April in this remote learning, remote work mode. I'm projecting that we would save about three hundred forty seven thousand dollars. My assumptions include a couple of, one is what I just mentioned, having to do with outplacement. And number two, that we would have about a twenty-five percent reduction. In the cost of our bus contract during this period. You know, one of the things that's happening that, um. You know, is still under review is Governor's Order seven R basically indicates that. You know, we should continue to pay our bus contracts. And our special ed service providers, among other things. Um, however, there is room for negotiating what that cost is going to be. The governor's order is kind of specific on the bus contract. To pay for active employees and their health benefits. So my point is there's a lot of, a lot of things that are. Not quite spelled out, you know, in terms of details. So we're going to have to negotiate in this case with a bus contractor. A special ed, our placement service providers. Hopefully get some more guidance so that, you know, we're, we're doing this consistently across, you know, the state and other school districts. One of the challenges for DACO, our bus provider, and I've been, um, in constant communication with the CFO is, you know, what they do for us. You know, from their point of view has to be the same across their other customer, um, contacts. I mean, obviously I would try and negotiate. You know, as favorably as we can for Cheshire Public Schools, but you know, that's their dilemma. So there's not a lot of, um. There's not a lot of clarity yet that we hope to get as we get, you know, through April and into May. And then the other thing, just to go back to one of the questions that was raised earlier, part of Governor's, that same executive order seven R. Is very specific. It said, school districts must continue to employ or to restore to employment if already laid off. And pay school staff who are directly employed, included but not limited to teachers, our professionals, which are IAs. Other court staff, cafeteria staff, clerical staff. And audio workers to the greatest extent practicable. So, um, I think we're working through these details. I mean. Pretty confident that we're moving in the right direction. I just don't have enough clarity on, on what those costs are going to look like as we go through the next month or two. But I will continue to work at it and keep you updated.
Thanks, Vincent. Uh, Tim had a question a few minutes ago.
Uh, thank you, Tony. Is it working? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yeah, this, I was going to ask it before I had to shut down and reboot. With regard to, so, uh, this is. Probably, well, I guess it could be prevent Jeff. Doesn't really matter. There was a discussion before about comparing the cost of unemployment to wages. And unemployment will be a relatively large percentage of the wages anyway. But if somebody goes on unemployment, do you get healthcare benefits?
Well, if somebody's furloughed, they don't get healthcare benefits. It would be entitled to purchase Cobra, you know, from, now, this is during an ordinary period.
Sure. No, I, I, my simple point is that I appreciate, I just want to voice my support. I said it a few weeks ago. This is every, I, I imagine just about everybody. I know I hate this situation. I imagine most people do where we are right now. I had voiced my support for what you're doing, Jeff, in terms of our employees. I appreciate it. Uh, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to sort of just simply compare. Over to unemployment because they don't have the healthcare benefits or they could go on the Cobra. There's an additional cost. I hate this. I really do. It all happened so suddenly. Um, I support, I want you to know and I want staff to know that I support it. Right now, I support what you're doing. I, I can't say I, you know, a few weeks ago, I said, if we're here a year from now. I don't know how I would feel. And truthfully, I mean, if we get to. My own personal feeling is that we're probably not going back to school this year. Um, I know that where I, where I work, I'm not supposed to be going back. There until the end of June and I kind of look at that as an indicator of where, where Connecticut is right now. So, you know, even in September, I don't know how planning will go over the course of the summer if things are this bad and they continued. But for right now, I definitely appreciate what you're doing, Jeff. I just wanted to say that because there's not just. There's not just the cost involved, but there is the anxiety placed on anyone. And I know this doesn't cover everybody because there are people who are. Suddenly unemployed. I mean, I've seen it firsthand in my own life. Uh, not me, but people that I know. It's scary, uh, but also the anxiety that gets associated with it, not knowing what the future holds and to the extent that we can. Um, minimize that for right now and still get something. I'm, I'm not going to say anybody's doing, uh, I'm not, not anybody. You know, whoever it is, the large groups, the teachers, the IAs, I'm not going to say that they're doing a hundred percent of what they did before. Some of their tasks have changed. But I support this. I support what you're doing. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Tim. Adam, I think it's back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so up next is the, uh, my report of the finance committee meeting that we held on March 11th, I believe. Uh, the, the meeting itself was intended to review, uh, a, uh, potential, or I, I don't know if it's potential. I think it's the, actually going to happen. Uh, pension recalculation, um, uh, and the budget implications of that. And also, uh, student activities. Um, I'll also note that, um. For those in attendance, at least for me, it was a, a strange meeting because, you know, it began as just, you know, a, a regular old meeting and then. It, uh, it turned into like the first, the, the night, like COVID-19 Eve when, uh. Jeff had made his announcement that the schools were going to close and, and so we had, um, you know, Dr. Gad, Mr. Woods. Mr. Jeffrey, uh, Mr. Trifone were all there and they're, you know, their phones are all going off while we're asking questions and, you know. They're, you know, everything's blowing up all at the same time. So it was a very, uh, kind of a strange meeting. There's a lot of detail, uh, if you would like to know what occurred, the, uh, the minutes for this meeting are highly detailed. Uh, several pages long, so, um, but, uh, overall, uh, we, we just sort of went over some of the choices that. This, the school system might have to make for, uh, for the pension recalculation, uh, looked like that, um. We may have to make additional contributions. And I think that was even before, you know, the market was down, you know, thirty percent or whatever it is now. Um, so I'm not exactly sure if there's going to be additional impact of, for what we discussed on, uh, March 11th. Um, we also spent a significant amount of time on the student activities accounts. The, uh, the principals did an excellent job in explaining, uh, how they administer those accounts. Um, and again, the detail is, is in the minutes. Um, and at the end, um. I believe that, uh, we informally decided, I don't think we took a vote, but that, uh, I was going to be meeting with, uh. Uh, town officials and with our, uh, with our auditor to look into, uh, if there's, if we, if we could set a scope to actually, uh. Do a detailed audit of the student activity accounts. Because I don't know if a lot of parents know that over a million dollars flows through those accounts every year. And it sounded like the controls that the principals use, um, uh, are effective. Uh, but we want to, uh, kind of make sure going forward that those, uh, controls are. Uh, are, are effective. And so, um, we're going to be meeting to see what the, the scope and, uh, potential costs of, of an audit would be, uh, through those accounts to, because, you know. As the, uh, the principals, uh, duly noted that all of that money essentially it comes from the parents. Uh, parents and students through various fundraisers and, and personal donations to the various activities. Um, and we want to make sure that, uh, the board and, and the school system is, uh, still being a, a good steward of that significant amount of money. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna try and, and see if, uh, everything is, um, you know, working as it should. And that going forward, that the parents can have trust, uh, in the accounts that the money is being put into. Uh, so, so that, that is my report for the finance meeting on March 11th.
Any questions on the, actually, Adam, I think it was March 12th, if I'm mistaken.
My mistake.
Any questions about the, uh, report on our March 12th meeting for finance from the board? Seems there is none. Adam's back to you.
Um, I think you handed it over to Vin for the, uh, my, always my favorite part, the medical benefit trust fund.
Thank you, Mr. Gruppo. That's my favorite part too, for the record. Mr. Superintendent Solon is bringing up the medical benefits report. The, um. The medical benefits claims for the month of February were extraordinarily high at nine hundred twenty one thousand three hundred sixty nine dollars. You know, normally January and February, you know, we expect to see how claims drop because it is the, of a new HSA. Uh, plan year. Um. But I will tell you that a good part of the reason for that, you know, large, um, number, nine hundred twenty one thousand in claims is because we have some. Very large claims that are coming through the, um. You know, the, the school system. In fact, if you look on a year-to-date basis, I just pulled a report, we've got about one point one million dollars in claims. one million dollars in claims. Those are claims that are over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So the bottom line really is that on a year-to-date basis, you know, if you take the contributions, we've made five point four million dollars and then you deduct the six point nine million in claims that have come through, our medical trust fund balance has decreased by about one point two million so far this year. So as of the end of February, the claims balance or the trust fund balance is two million five oh four two eighty-seven. That gives us about three point three four months of claims, assuming seven hundred fifty thousand per month in claims. However, this year we're seeing about eight hundred sixty-nine thousand in claims, again, driven by some large claims. So we've got two point eight eight months of claims if you use the eight hundred sixty-nine thousand. You know, I, I would say that the trust fund balance is still healthy, you know, we're somewhere around three months worth of claims. None of these claims have anything to do with COVID. I mean, you know, this is February twenty-ninth claim, so this is all pre-COVID. You know, depending on, on what happens as we go through the remainder of the year, hopefully we do, you know, stabilize and we don't see any of these large claims continue. But that is certainly, you know, something that is, that is possible. There's really not much we could do at this point in time, you know, and we are going to be meeting with the town council later in April to talk about, you know, board's recommended budget. So this will get some more discussion in terms of what we do for next year when we, when we meet with the town council. The, that's really the long and short of, of medical benefits for today. And I saw a raised hand. Question?
Yeah, I think it was a question from Adam Grapo.
Hi, Vin. So this question is, is I guess more of a terrible question. So I'll, I'll start by saying, God forbid, any one of our employees became ill with COVID and had to go to the ICU. Do we have any idea of what a cost would be for, for, you know, potentially, what, a fourteen-day stay in the hospital and, you know, you know, let's say a time on a ventilator, anything like that, and hopefully that they would recover? Just to get an idea, like, you know, what if you had, like you said, I think Jeff had mentioned twelve people currently in the system. Hopefully they're all making a great recovery. But, you know, if we had a large amount of employees were to, you know, have something like this, is, is that something where our, our, was it our, our stopgap insurance comes into play or something, or would we have a significant exposure if we had like ten employees? You know, God forbid, had to go to the ICU or something like that?
Well, I mean, the, the answer to the, the first part of the question is, you know, fourteen-day hospital stay, you know, the services, I mean, you're talking, you know, probably a minimum of five thousand dollars a day, you know, and it's, and it's up from there. You know, I think that if you want to use that as a kind of a ballpark, the stop-loss insurance will cover any claim that exceeds a hundred seventy-five thousand for an individual. So, you know, if you look at the February report, you'll see that we have received about a hundred four thousand in stop-loss reimbursement so far this year. I know that there's about sixty thousand dollars more expected, but yeah, you know, hopefully, like you say, we don't have any of our, you know, employees that, you know, are hospitalized, you know, during this period with COVID and, you know, I'm certainly going to pray for that one because I won't want to see anybody get hurt that's on our staff. But, you know, well, again, I don't think there's anything that we could do at this point in time as, as it relates from a financial point of view. You know, we, we have our budget set. We'll continue to make the contributions. We have a decent reserve and we'll cross our fingers a little bit.
Thank you.
Any other board members of questions on the medical trust fund report, medical reserve? Seeing as there are none, we're going to move, I'm sorry, Adam, did you have anything else you wanted to add or does that wrap up your finance report?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Personnel Committee. Tim, you want to give an update on the meetings held in March?
Yeah, you can hear me, right?
Yes, sir.
We're having a lot of problems tonight. Yeah, so with regard to the March 5th meeting, we, we covered some important topics. It was also pre-COVID and I, pre-COVID lockdown. And I'm, I, I prefer to revisit that as we move a little bit forward and get away from what I'm just, in my mind, is kind of a bit of an emergency stage right now. With regard to the March 28th meeting, it was a fairly rushed meeting. You know, we did it and I thought of it and we had it probably, you know, maybe a day and a half later. Basically just wanted to, it was due to the COVID and we just wanted to have some contingency planning. If anything, you know, happened to the superintendent or any of the other staff, just to make sure there were contingency plans in place. And that resulted in the, that basically resulted in the policy meeting that I believe Adam will be discussing in three, two, one. That's it for me.
Any, any questions for Tim on personnel? Yeah, and I, I do want to thank Tim for, you know, pulling out the succession planning. It's, uh, it's good heads up. I think I, I don't know if I mentioned the last meeting. Many companies, private public are going through this exercise right now. They're executing the business continuity session planning or they're adjusting it based on this, you know, kind of one-of-a-kind event. So it turned out we had to make some adjustments to our policy language. It was a little old. So that being said, thanks for the heads up. Thanks, everybody on policy figuring together that short notice. I know there's, there's been meetings since then. So that being said, Adam, I think you have an update from policy.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Yeah, so we had a policy meeting. Help. Oh, yeah, I guess, because it's April now. It was held on March 31st. Sorry about that. And just as, as an important note for, for people who follow the policy subcommittee, we normally have other readings, other policies that were, that we have up for a second, third reading and the policy committee decided to table those policies until our, our next meeting to take on these two very important policies that were actually brought up. I think they're both brought up at Personnel Meeting, or at least certainly one of them was. Policy twenty-one thirty-two, which was, what are we titling this? I guess our contingency plan in case the superintendent is unable to fulfill his duties. And so we made changes, well, actually, we didn't make changes. We are, we are proposing to adopt this policy that I believe we got from CAEB because we did not have one, or if we did, oh, here it is. I'm sorry. We had a policy that was from May nineteen ninety-six and we thought that this should be revisited. And I guess, setting, all right, I guess I'll, I'll read the entire policy. It's just one page here. So for, it's two sections, which is the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Chief Operating Officer. And for the first section, for Assistant Superintendent Instructional Services, it reads, the Assistant Superintendent, and this is with our proposed changes. The Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services shall perform such duties and exercise such activities as may be required or conferred upon the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services by the law, the Superintendent of Schools and/or the Board of Education. The Assistant Superintendent functions as an integral part, as an integral and contributing member of the district's management team. He, she will provide leadership in developing, achieving and maintaining the best educational programs and services directed by the superintendent. He, she will assist the superintendent in the areas of curriculum, instruction, learning, staff development, supervision, remediation, securing state federal funding, personnel and evaluation. And then the, I guess, the important, mostly important part here is that the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services will assume responsibility for the school system in the absence of the superintendent. And then in the section labeled Chief Operating Officer, the Chief Operating Officer shall perform such duties and exercise such activities as may be required or of or conferred upon him/her by the law, the Superintendent of Schools and/or the Board of Education. The Chief Operating Officer functions as an integral and contributing member of the district's management team. The Chief Operating Officer will provide leadership in developing, achieving and maintaining the best educational programs and services directed by the superintendent. The Chief Operating Officer will assist the superintendent in the areas of budget development, development and management, negotiations, facilities management, financial record-keeping for goals, for, I'm sorry, for local and grant funds, personnel and all other business and operational aspects of the district. And then the, the big ad here is that the Chief Oper, Chief Operating Officer will assume responsibility for the school system in the absence of the superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services. So that is for policy twenty-one thirty-two. And then the second policy, which is completely new. And this is in reference, and I don't know if Vin wanted to speak to this at all, but this is adopted policy for a, for a non-lapsing educational fund. And I will, I will read this here, then maybe Vin can chime in if you'd like. The Cheshire Board of Education may request the town council deposit into a non-lapsing account any unexpended funds from the board's prior fiscal year general operating budget. Provided such deposited amount does not exceed two percent of the total budgeted appropriation for education for such prior fiscal year pursuant to Connecticut General Statute ten dash two forty-eight A. Any expenditure from non-lapsing education funds shall be authorized solely by the Board of Education. Each expenditure from such account shall be made only for educational purposes. The town council shall create the non-lapsing account and be responsible for the accounting of the funds in accordance with, with GAAP. The account shall be subject to the annual audit as required by state statute. The Board of Education shall review the fund balance on an annual basis. So those are the two policies. And Vin, if you'd like to add any detail to that one.
The only thing that I, that I add, Adam, is that the, you know, the reason to do this this year is just because of the unknowns having to do with the, the funds that we may spend over the summer, you know, that we couldn't expend during the school year and in particular to provide special education services, but, but potentially other things like maintenance services. So if we have the ability to carry over part of our budget, it still stays under the Board of Education's control, but the town council has to approve the deposit of our unexpended funds into the lapsing, into this non-lapsing account. So, you know, I do think it would help us this year in particular. We can, it, once the account is set up and once the policy is established, we don't necessarily have to do this year over year. We may find it to be a better way to close out the year, but it doesn't mean we need to use it after this year. So that's really all I'd like to add.
Thank you, Vin. So are there any questions or comments on those policies?
I, I had a comment. We can say it for the motion, but what, what Vince just said regarding the non-lapsing account is an extraordinary event we're facing with. Normally in, I think any school year that I've been involved with on the board, we've never had, lack of a better word, an opportunity to have three hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars potentially unspent in this given circumstance. So this is a one-off event. The non-lapse account is something other school districts are also looking into adopting as we speak. There's a chance, I think, to put in this money that's not going to be spent this year and use it in the coming year or two. And I'm not sure it's going to be a, an ongoing thing, but I think given the circumstances we're dealing with, it makes a lot of sense. Could tell you that I had a chance to speak with our town council, Mayor Rob Oris, on Friday. And, you know, they're kind of wondering what our thoughts were on this as they're gearing up, not just for the new budget that's going to be talked about hopefully in the next few weeks, but they're also, towns also facing their side of the budget with this, with the closures and so forth. They're trying to plan ahead. So I think giving some clarity on this from the board will help the town plan a little better as well. So thank you for finance, for policy getting together very quickly on these two policies and moving them forward. That being said, that's all I wanted to add on that. Adam, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Was there, are there any other comments on those two policies?
Tim White has a comment.
Yeah, just for, just for clarity, I, with regard to, with regard to the money, sort of the, the benefit of having this money at the end of the year. I mean, my understanding is basically every year there is a few hundred thousand dollars. We have a seventy, seventy-five million dollar budget and every year you don't hit it perfectly. Usually is a few hundred thousand dollars that's left, which is, becomes encumbered and committed to facilities projects. Our buildings are old. So that stuff, the, the money gets spent there. And what's happening in this situation, my understanding is basically because of COVID, there's just, we really need a lot more flexibility here. So we can't necessarily encumber it on June thirtieth. We would like to have the flexibility to, you know, whatever it might be, special ed services and things like that that happen in July. I mean, that's my understanding of how the budgets typically happen just for, is it, I mean, can Vin can, or Jeff, can you speak to that? I mean, there usually is some of that. Out of a seventy-five million dollar budget, it's, you know, half a percent of the budget that's left there at the end of the year. And it gets put into facilities. It's not uncommon for that to happen, I should say.
Yeah, you know, we manage it in such a way that there is, that we're not sitting there on June thirtieth saying, geez, I hope we have enough money. We really try and be conservative throughout the entire school year. Right now, we're at seventy percent expenditure of our budget. We're, we're holding off all budgets at seventy percent so that we can make sure that we can pay our bills come the end of June. And typically, if we do find that we haven't spent, it's because we've underspent accounts. So we're buying replacement equipment and at that point, replacement furniture, things that, you know, we really need, but first-case scenario would have to live without if other expenses ran long. In this instance, it's incredibly unique that we have more significant fund balances, obviously due to COVID, and we also have a significant expected cost in terms of providing special education and additional academic supports after we roll over into the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. So the confluence of those things coming together is really, is what led us to, you know, pushing this as a policy adoption.
Thank you.
Adam, it's back to you.
I think he's gone.
I think we lost Adam.
I, I'm on policy. I can make a motion if you want me to. I don't know if there's no more discussion.
Yeah, I, that is next up on the agenda. I know, Adam, I want to bring those forward, but maybe by trying to make the motion, he'll jump back on. So Tim, if you have some motions on a policy, love to hear them.
Is that Adam? I hear a beep or something. All right, I'll just start in. Motion, moved that the Cheshire Board of Education waive the second and third readings for policies twenty-one thirty-two administration and thirty-one seventy-one point one non-lapsing education fund and direct the superintendent to put into immediate effect.
Is there a second? Akron, Helen seconds. The, the, the motion is move that the Cheshire Board of Education waive the second and third readings of these number twenty-one thirty-two administration and thirty-one's one that one non-lapsing education fund and direct the superintendent into immediate effect. Discussion. And just a heads up, Adam's PC froze. I just got a text from him. Hopefully he'll jump in soon.
I can arrange to deliver a new Chromebook to Adam.
He's actually using his Mac at home, so you're off the hook on it being a Chromebook problem.
I could, I could jump in here and just offer another comment on this.
Please do, Tim.
Particularly in relation to the whole Policy Committee meeting. So what, basically what we're doing is we're fast-tracking this. We're eliminating the second and third readings, which we would normally do. For me personally, I think this is important. I think that in light of the circumstances, it is worthwhile to do this. At the same time, just so the, the electorate is aware, there was a third item on the agenda that I think it was, you know, the three of us agreed, we didn't want it. And it was effectively, and Jeff, you can jump in here and re-characterize it, but basically it was an authority granted to Boards of Ed to, by Governor Lamont to cede a new and probably an unprecedented level of authority over the school system. Sort of just seeding, the Board of Ed seeding away its power to the superintendent. I don't think that that's necessary. I think that the superintendent's done, you know, I think he's done a great job here with COVID. And that includes getting the technology up and, okay, so that's fine. Catherine said not accurate. So these are my, these are my thoughts. But with regard to,
Tim, we're going to stay with the motion on the table.
Okay, okay, okay. Sorry.
For Adam, I think he's on. Adam, you back?
I'm back. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, yeah, Chrome's not agreeing with my Mac today. It's crazy. All right, what did I miss?
Well, Adam, Tim was gracious enough to make the motion.
Oh, thank you, Tim.
Catherine Helen. And Tim, just give a little update on that. So, so the motion is on the table.
Did, well, I support the motion. I'm not sure where we are. Are we, are we about to vote or?
We were just having discussion, but really no one raised their hand other than to give a little update. I don't have anything added to the motions. I think everybody did a good job. They most through.
Okay, I also support the motion.
If there is no other discussion, I believe there is. And also read it again for folks that are tuning in. The motion is move that the Cheshire Board of Education waive the second and third readings for Policies Number 2132 Administration and 3171 dot one, Non-Lapsing Education Fund and direct the superintendent to put into immediate effect. All those in favor, you can raise your hands or message. Thank you. All those opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Good job, Policy Committee. Anything else out of policy, Adam, or is that wrap-up your report?
That wraps up my report. Thank you.
Moving on, Andrew, we're talking about the School Modernization Committee update.
Sure. Thank you. It's a short update as we have not had any meetings as most of our meetings are based in the schools and touring outside school facilities. However, we did go out to bid for the Owners Project Manager. We got two bids back. One being Colliers Associates and the other being Arcadis. Both bids came in on March 12th. We were to have a March 18th meeting where they were going to come in and do the presentation to the Board and to the, to members of the Board and to members of the School Modernization Committee. But unfortunately that has been paused for the time being. We received communication on the 25th from our net Talbot saying that school modernization is going to be, is considered non-essential at this time. And they would be letting us know and we would be resuming meetings again. So that's unfortunately where we are, but in light of the size of the group and the meetings and what needs to be done, we're doing the best we can at this point.
Thanks, Andrew. Just actually just a couple hours ago, I got an email from who's the Chair of the School Modernization Committee, based myself, Rob Orish, Sean and Arnett, just saying, hey, whatever we can do to get, you know, Modernization Committee back on track, knowing that the COVID is a higher priority. So she was looking for ways to see if Arnett can help maybe with Zoom or other ways, at least to review the bids of the RFPs that came back. So Rob Orish did respond and basically saying that the Town Council is actually going to meet tomorrow night with Zoom. Should work well for Modernization Committee. So Sean and Arnett's going to reach out to her, you know, as soon as things die down a little bit. So it sounds like perhaps we'll go use Zoom in some part for Modernization Committee. I would check with Ann Reed tomorrow. Hopefully this week or next week if you hear from Arnett. I know they have a lot of things going on at Town Council, Town side. I might be back up this month, hopefully. Thank you. Thanks for the update. Any, does any questions on our Innovation Committee, but any other standing committee updates? I know no other standing committees have met. Next up, we have approval of minutes and we've got several of them. First one is the minutes from the Board Education Business Meeting held on February 20th, 2020. Does anyone have a motion? To approve those minutes?
So moved or a motion to approve the, the minutes? I don't have the, is there a motion on the agenda? I would assume there is. Let's see. Sorry.
It's okay. It's encompassing for all the meeting minutes.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna use my PC next time, I think. Here it is. Okay. That the Cheshire Board of Education approved the minutes of the Board of Education Meetings held February 20, March 5th, March 16th and March 26th.
Thank you, Adam. Is there a sec? Oh, Catherine, second it. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes? Seeing as there, there are none? I'm just chiming in. No questions. So the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education Meetings held February 20th, March 5th, March 16th and March 26th. All those in favor? All those opposed? There are none opposed. The minute, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Up next, correspondence. Catherine, do we have any correspondence? No correspondence. Thank you, Catherine. Old business. We have nothing on our old business. Audience, public question and answers via CPS COVID-19 at cheshire.k12ct.us. Jeff, do we have any, any emails coming in?
We do. Had a couple of questions, comments. Very appreciative of the remote learning. A question was asked about IAs, if they would be potentially available for one-to-one support. So I'll talk to Tracy Hussey about that, determine, you know, if there's anybody with available time, how could we potentially deploy that individual for students? That's a good question. Another question raised about the, the possibility of a pass-fail option for grading. That's been a discussion point at the state level and in the state college system as well about whether or not schools should go to pass-fail. At the conference call that we attended last week with the Commissioner of Education, it seemed pretty clear that that was going to be left to the local towns to decide, to the local school systems. So, you know, we are evaluating that, but they were going to still provide an update this weekend. Pass-fail from the state perspective. We're, we're considering the benefits and, and challenges associated with that. Kind of weighing that. What we've been doing from a curricular perspective is really trying to identify what are the key learning objectives for the fourth quarter for every course that we offer, every content area. And I think we're more likely than not to assess those, those areas in order for, for students to just focus in on those and demonstrate a mastery of success on those. So we have a better stand, understanding where students are in their progress. So those questions were asked. The question was asked about Google Classroom. Can you share that? Google Classroom, can we share the Google Classroom with parents? No, we can't. Only issued to those with people inside our organization. Can we issue Google Classrooms like passwords to? Students can ultimately, depending on the grade level, share documents through Google Drive, but not through Google Classroom itself. And the last question I received was, can the public get a copy of the bids for the School Modernization Committee? Project Manager? And I think those will be available. The bid opening, correct me if I'm wrong, Vin, I think is already taking place, but I'm not sure if those bids are available on the website or not. Off the top of my head.
The bids, yes, the bids were open. I don't believe they're posted on, on the town website. I'll, I'll take a look now.
There is even a 12th.
What was that, Adam?
And the 12th.
They were COVID eve is, Adam. I appreciate that one.
Any other emails, Jeff? We're waiting for Vincent.
Sorry. Thank you.
They get a message, text. Not sure why they're messaging me instead of sending email. That's okay. As far as spring break, this parent did email me. I think I shared the emails to the Superintendent of last week about not having a spring break for concerns over internet issues, but as it turns out, we shortened it. So I was very happy to hear that and thanks to administration for, for doing that. Another message I have is as far as spring break is concerned is truly make it so that kids are unplugged during those four, five days and like nothing, no homework, no assignments due. When they come back, have them take a break and appreciate it for at least trying to schedule something in for spring break. That's pretty much all I got. Let's see here. Adam had a question. And we'll start there. Go ahead, Adam.
Thanks, Tony. Can you hear me? Okay. All right, good. So my, my question was left over from Marlene's presentation from before. They had to do with the Google Class folders. I know that like my son in particular, it's, he's in third grade and so Google Classroom is going to be ramping up. And I know that over the course of the last several weeks, his teacher's been sending stuff that might only necessarily be accessible through his ID as part of the Google folders. And so is there a way that parents can get access to that? Or does the teacher have to specifically grant access or open it up somehow? And also, are there any tutorial videos for, for the third grade parents? Because I'm assuming that the four through 12 have already gotten some sort of tutorial on Google Classroom that, that we can access. Thanks.
Great questions, Adam. We suggest that parents access their students' Google Classroom with them. So sitting down next to them and asking them to log in and, and, you know, showing them around so that you can see everything that they have access to. We don't provide that kind of access to parents for parents to get into. But we will be sending home a link so that parents can, can access tutorials on, on how it can help and, and to help parents navigate their child's Google Classroom.
Thanks, Marlene. When you say sending home tutorials, is that something that's going to be going into, into the packets that staff is usually putting together? That's going to be going out next week or so? Or is this an email as well?
We'll send a, classroom teachers can do this, but I also envision us coming from out of my office that all third grade parents will get an email letting them know that this is happening when this goes live and with a link describing how, how parents can access it. So I would say School Messenger, which means through email.
Excellent. Thank you. Vincent says the bid results are on the town's website. Thanks, Vincent. And Tim had asked earlier from Mike Salamini, how many viewers we had tonight. Mike said it peaked around 48, which is, which is nice. Still have more folks online than we do in our meetings at Town Hall, but thanks for attending. Seeing as there are no other questions from the audience or emails, next up is new business chairperson's update. I really don't have much of an update. I think I've been hearing as many communications as I've been getting from Cabe, State, other board chairs to various board members that may have interest in that, but do know that every school district are, are, are talking the same issues, concerns that we're working through. Some are, are as far as long as, as long as we are, some are further behind. I know that based on today's chatter with the chairs, a lot of school districts are trying to interpret the executive order from last week and they're working through their board attorneys as we are to figure out what the impact is to us. Beyond that, we don't have much of an update. I think as soon as we get more information from the town and next step for the budget process and Modernization Committee will share it out with all the board. But that's pretty much about it. And seeing as that is the end of the agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I said a final comment before we adjourn, if that's okay?
There's a motion on the table.
I would draw it. I would draw the motion.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. White. I, there was something I forgot to add on my, my policy report was that there was a third policy that we had discussed and the, the Policy Subcommittee decided not to move forward on it. And it was a, a policy that had, I don't know if it came from Cabe or where it came from, but we put it on our agenda just for discussion. It was a, a policy to suspend all policies in the, during this emergency for, for COVID. And we all came to an agreement with, with Mr. Solon that our communication through you, Tony, and, and through the rest of our subcommittees, we felt was, was good enough that if Jeff did need to do something of an emergency capacity that we would be able to meet in sufficient time to allow him to do what he needed to do. And that in the meantime, Mr. Solon has, has done a great job in, in doing what he has been able to do through existing policy and through the powers, powers given to him through executive order and through the State Department of Ed that we felt there was no reason to suspend our policies at this time and that the way we are functioning currently was, was more than adequate. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. I'm touching on that briefly. We're talking about the policy motions, but thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? You good?
Yes, good. Thank you.
Awesome. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn, Tim?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Faith's seconds. Motion to adjourn. All those.
Aye.
Motion passes. Yes, you, everyone. I just want to thank again the minstern staff, Mike Meehaney, board members and public for all your time, effort and patience working through the, we have some glitches tonight. I don't need our PCs, but by and large we'll get through it. Again, thanks for all your help. Stay safe and be talking again very soon. That being said, move to a, move to a kind of have a gavel here, which I don't have. But the meeting is, be safe. See you soon. Take care, everyone.